So Bobby's not going to be here. Got everybody. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening our open session and I'd like to call on Trustee Lang to report on any actions taken in closed session.
There we go. Okay. There were three items of action taken in closed session. On a six to zero vote with Trustee Jay absent, the board voted to reject the claim filed by Christine Rosenau against the district. On a six to zero vote with Trustee Jay absent, the board approved general unpaid leave from May 30th, 2017 through August 12th, 2017, to a part-time classified employee at Saddleback College. And finally, on a five to zero vote with Trustee Jay absent and Trustee Witt abstaining, the board approved an unpaid general leave of absence with benefits from February 13th, 2017 through June 30th, 2017, to a full-time classified employee at Irvine Valley College. Those were the actions from closed session.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. Okay, now we'll have the invocation led by Trustee Lang, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Milchker, so please rise.
We gather together today to make decisions for our community college district. May we use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our students, our community college district, and our fellow citizens. I'd also like to leave you with a quote from one of my favorite authors, Mark Twain. Work like you don't need the money, love like you've never been hurt, sing like nobody's listening, dance like nobody's watching, live like it's heaven on earth. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments and I want to thank those who've submitted to agree to consolidate somewhat. So I'll ask the ASG Saddleback College to move forward to the podium and I think it's Ray Camio. Ray? You're up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ray Camio and I'm the Vice President of Saddleback College. So this DC trip that I was able to take with my colleagues at Saddleback College was nothing but memorable. I want to thank the district, school, President Burnett, and Lucy for giving me and other students this amazing opportunity. We were able to participate in various activities such as going to an American History Museum, going to different receptions such as California State Society, and luncheons hosted by Senator Mimi Walters, and last but not least, the 58th Presidential inauguration. So before this trip, I had little to maybe no interest in government and politics because as a first-generation immigrant from Japan, I have no voting rights and therefore I slightly felt a little distant. However, after attending this trip, I gained motivation to learn more about everything. How can I contribute to my community? How can I help students as a Vice President of Student Government, first-generation immigrant and woman? And I think I was able to get this answer from this trip as well. Participate more, learn more, and share more. The experience I got from this trip will forever be in my memory and serve as a motivation for me to grow and help others.
Hello, everyone. My name's Inji Shu. I'm the Director of Publicity on Student Government. I would first like to thank Todd Burnett, our ASG President Lucy, and our Saddleback College for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Being an econ major who is aspiring to be in politics, this was the perfect opportunity for me to kind of get the lay of the field, see what DC life is like and how our country actually works. And from the congressional luncheons to getting lost on the subways, the entire trip from top to bottom was so incredibly memorable. My favorite part of the trip would have to be right after the inauguration and the juxtaposition of the views of the Trump supporters to the protests right outside of the inauguration. It was just very eye-opening. It was eye-opening just seeing the spectrum of political beliefs, creeds, and viewpoints. I'm going to keep it brief and just leave you guys with the gratitude of the opportunity to see history being made, and thank you, everyone, again.
Hi there. My name is Andrea. I serve on the Publicity Committee and I also serve on the Judiciary. So my trip to Washington was nothing short of amazing. I remember growing up and learning about our country's history and government and being fascinated. So to be able to actually walk into the Senate offices, visit the Jefferson and Lincoln Memorial, and explore the Capitol with my own eyes was one of the greatest experiences I've ever had. And it was amazing to witness something I think is very special in our country, which is the peaceful transfer of power from one government to another. I've come back from my experience with a passion for our country's history and democracy, and I want to use this passion to help others as I work on my political science major and try to find my place in the world. I want to thank President Burnett and the Board of Saddleback College and Lucy for the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I would like you to know that it influenced my life in a very profound way. Thank you.
Can you stay up there for just a second? That was awesome. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. So Lucy didn't tell you you had one assignment that I asked for last month?
I told you last month.
No, you didn't. So the question is, how many people attended the inauguration?
A lot.
Good answer.
All right. Well, thank you again. It sounds like you had a great experience and glad you're able to do it.
And thank you for all the opportunity.
Thank you, Anna.
Everyone.
All right. So now we are in the interest of some special attendees tonight. We're going to move forward, item 4.1, which is a recognition of 50 years as a community college district. We're so proud of this moment. We're so happy so many of our partners throughout the South Orange County Community College District could be here tonight. So I will turn it over to our Chancellor, Deborah Fitzsimmons, to kick things off.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and members of the community, and especially also the dignitaries who joined us this evening. I'm honored to share in a celebration with you tonight, marking the 50th anniversary of South Orange County Community College District. On February 14th, 1967, taxpayers voted by a margin of two to one to form the district. A year later, the district opened its first campus, Saddleback College, with just 540 students. Then-Governor Ronald Reagan dedicated the campus with more than 1,000 community members in attendance, and you can imagine how exciting that was. The front page of the local paper proclaimed, "We're a college town." Over the next 10 years, the student population grew dramatically, warranting a need to open a second campus in our service area. It was known as Saddleback North or North Campus, and in 1985, that campus became Irvine Valley College. Today, South Orange County Community College District serves more than 68,000 students per year, employs 4,000 faculty and staff, and operates an annual budget of $775 million. Our service area of 352 square miles has grown from serving 125,000 residents to nearly 1 million residents, and we estimate that the colleges have served more than 1 million students. A couple weeks ago, on Valentine's Day, which was our anniversary date, we launched our 50th celebration. We surprised employees with baskets at 11 locations across the district and we did these candy drops. And these large baskets of various gold-wrapped candies were accompanied by very large gold balloons in the shape of a 5-0 for 50. Students, faculty, and staff gathered around for photo opportunities, and the basket remained at the location with a celebration flyer with highlights of the district's 50 years. We wanted to launch our one-year of celebration by honoring both the students and the faculty and staff who devote their careers to helping students build better lives each and every day. And on Valentine's Day, we also had a large advertisement in the Orange County Register which included the social, economic impact and benefits we contribute to our community. It was important for us to thank the community for their trust in us 50 years ago, and we commit our promise to bringing higher education opportunities to residents from San Clemente to Tustin. Tonight, we're honored to present a gift to mark this important historic milestones, and I would like to ask Board President Tim Jamal and Presidents Burnett and Glenn -- Presidents Rockmore to join me at the podium. And I'm not sure if the commemorative artwork is facing the audience, Terry? Or -- oh, we're going to show it on the screen. Okay, that's what we're going to do. So on behalf of the district, I am pleased to present this commemorative artwork, which was developed by our Public Affairs Department and culminates months of research and creative design work. And we're showing it -- we're showing a snapshot of it on the screen. The artwork is presented on glass to provide a contemporary, modern take on 50 years of history. And as you can see, the artwork captures the groundbreaking ceremonies of all three of our campuses. Underneath, you're going to see photos highlighting 50 years of growth, expansion, maturing, and modernization of our campuses. Below that is an actual timeline, and we're going to have this out in the foyer when we're done, so you can really take a close look at this. The timeline has milestones along the way, and you'll notice the logo has evolved and is currently sporting a new ribbon commemorating 50 years of service to the community. You'll notice that behind the dais up there and also here, and in all the locations, we have the logo. You'll also notice that the lines of color on the timeline graphically display where each campus was introduced into our 50th anniversary history, and then you'll notice the year-by-year accounting for the service of the Chancellors. And also, the foundation of this artwork is a timeline of every board member to serve an elected office as trustee for the district, and you'll notice that those names are boldly outlined on the timeline to mark your place in history. So that's our timeline commemorative artwork. Tonight, we are gifting seven of these commemorative artworks for -- one for each -- one for the Board, one for each college president, one for each college library, one for the district services lobby, and one for the Chancellor's office. So we have seven of those that are on the district we're going to have. We're going to facilitate the delivery and installation of these over the next couple of weeks, and we hope our entire community will enjoy the history this captures and the love and attention that went to its creation, and we hope that it's on display in the foyer in a few minutes, and you will have a chance to take a really close look at that. I want to thank you, the Board, the college presidents, and all of the college and district faculty and staff and students who devote yourselves to a noble career, and I want to thank our community at large, including our many legislative representatives, for their trust in us. Students are truly at the heart of what we do, and as you can see even the student government, how enthusiastic they are in their endeavors. We look forward to celebrating our 50 years with you throughout this year. Now I'd like to turn it over to Trustee Jamal, who's going to continue with the resolution.
Thank you, Chancellor Fitzsimmons. Congratulations to the Public Affairs Department. I look forward to looking at the artwork shortly. I think anything is the same year as I am, as our district must be a good thing, so. It is an honor to serve on this Board and to represent this district and the 68,000 students, some of whom are here with us tonight, so that's awesome. I'd like now to ask several of our distinguished guests who are here to come forward. We are a large district with cities from Tustin to San Clemente, and we have some very special people here with us tonight that are going to help us celebrate. So at this time, I'd like to ask the former President of this Board and former Assemblyman and now Mayor of the great city of Irvine, Don Wagner, to come forward.
I may be the only past trustee here. It's good to see -- I got to find my name on there. It's really good to be back and to help you celebrate what is just a thoroughly wonderful occasion. I spent 12 years on this Board, and I didn't have to spend much time on the Board before absolutely falling in love with the work that this community college district does, with the people who do that work, and with the students who are so richly benefited by the work this district does. It is a wonderfully marvelous place. And I had the opportunity just last week, when we had heard at City Hall about this event, to sign a very large, very nice, very wonderful resolution commemorating the 50 years. And so I called staff this morning and said, "I'm coming here tonight. I need you to get the resolution for me," and they said, "No, no, no, we can't do that. That's for your City Council meeting tomorrow night." But don't worry, we'll get you something.
A little baby.
And it's nice.
Looks pretty good.
It's nice. So I run into City Hall right before I come here, pick this up, sign it, get it framed, and as I'm walking out, I pass the unoccupied City Clerk's office, where the resolution is just laying out on the counter. So I can't leave this with you because my Assistant City Clerk is going to freak out in the morning. Where's the resolution? It's here. You're getting it. But in the meantime, a small and very heartfelt token of appreciation from the citizens of Irvine, the folks that I am privileged to represent now, to you, and more importantly, to the district that has done such fine work throughout Southern Orange County, but especially Irvine. Briefly, certificate of recognition, South Orange County Community College District, and your dedication and commitment to serving. Congratulations on this momentous occasion and best wishes for much success and prosperity now and long into the future. You get the little one tonight. You get the big one after we all agree to it tomorrow, which is going to happen. This is an awesome district. You're all to be commended for marvelous service. Thank you for what you do for our shared constituents.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Mayor Wagner, and for your Herculean efforts to get that over here tonight. Really appreciate that. All right, next up, I'd like to -- we all know we're in the city of Mission Viejo. Obviously, we serve a lot of cities, but this is the city where Saddleback College resides, and we're such great partners with the city. In fact, I think the students of Mission Viejo are the largest city population of students at Saddleback College. We're really proud of that. And I'd like to ask Mayor Protem Ed Sacks to come forward and say a few words.
We were prepared, Don. Preparation is 90% of everything. The 50 years is an incredible achievement. No question, the city is some 50-something years old. Mission Viejo Country Club this year is 50 years old. My score on the front nine is 50. And I believe it was at the age of 50 that I began faking dementia for my wife. And now 20 years later, it's starting to actually take place. But the partnership between the college here and the community is an incredible one. My two sons went to school here for a little while. I went to school here -- I didn't take an exam or anything -- for a little while. But I owe the school a lot of thanks, because you saved me some $65,000 in college tuition after my sons finished the first two years and then went on and paid the onerous amount of money to get a college education, which, by the way, they don't use whatsoever. So, well, it's -- they followed in their father's footsteps. It's my honor. The mayor would be here, but she's running the town hall, and so she asked me to do this, and I'm honored to be here on her behalf. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the city of Mission Viejo in honor of the 50th anniversary of South Orange County Community College District. There's a number of wherases in here about gratitude and community and leadership and all those sorts of things, and I don't want to take everybody's time by going through there, but I will read that now, therefore, I, Wendy Bucknam, by virtue of the authority vested in me, which was vested in her, to be -- to do this, as Mayor of the city of Mission Viejo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby congratulate South Orange County Community College District on the occasion of their 50th anniversary, and we wish you success in many, many more years to come.
Thank you very much. I will say, Mayor Bucknam was supposed to attend, and actually, I think Councilman Sacks was supposed to be at the town hall meeting, so thank you for being here tonight. All right. Not to be outdone, we are also -- we're represented by several layers of government here. We have city officials, but we also have state and federal officials. And I'm so pleased that Donovan Higbee is here from the Office of Congresswoman Mimi Walters. I don't know if -- oh, there you are. There. I'll keep looking that way. Do you want to say a few words on behalf of the Congresswoman? All yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Jamal and the entire Board. Congresswoman Walters just wanted to send a very hearty congratulations to the trustees, to the Chancellor, to both Presidents on 50 years of doing wondrous things for our shared communities. Congresswoman Walters represents a portion of the district, along with Congressman Eisen and Congressman Rohrbacher, and she wishes she could be here herself. I know she's known many of you for a very long time and enjoys working with you over her many years at different levels of government, and Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College have been such important parts of our communities over the past decades, and they do such a wonderful job of educating our students and, you know, helping our economy thrive here in Orange County. So on behalf of Congresswoman Mimi Walters, I make certificate of special congressional recognition presented to South Orange County Community College District in recognition of your 50 years of service to our community, now educating over more than 68,000 students per year. Congratulations on this remarkable milestone and best wishes on many successful years to come, dated February 27th. Signed, Mimi Walters, Member of Congress.
So oftentimes, someone who leaves office, then another one takes office, so I think we have here someone from the Office of Senator Pat Bates, whose seat used to be held by Senator Mimi Walters, I believe, and former council member of the city of Mission Viejo, and now with Senator Bates, Rhonda Rieden.
Well, I just wanted to let you all know that I am a product of the community college system. I went to LA Valley College. I lived in Burbank and graduated from high school there. And I didn't have enough money to even go to a state university, although I probably could have gotten into both. I didn't even try. I got a small scholarship from high school, and I was able to go to LA Valley College and do my general ed and get out of there. I was also able to work full-time and had the company that I worked for pay my tuition for the rest of the time. And then, when I started working for the company full-time, or actually, I had been working for them full-time, they also paid for my master's. So I, Mayor Protem Sacks, did it on a shoestring budget. And so -- and I am using my college education, and I just want to let you all know that I tell all the young people that I know, you will get the very best education at the community college level, because you get teachers and professors that actually know what they're talking about, and they like what they're doing, and you don't have to go into debt for it. So I am your biggest supporter, President Burnett, Chancellor, President Jamal. I think and I believe that Saddleback College is the number one in the state. I'm not sure if it is statistically, but from my perspective, it is, and you cannot get past this. So Senator Bates has sent me here tonight, along with Congress -- Senator Morlock. So let me just really quickly, I won't read all of it, I promise. Okay. By the Honorable Patricia Bates, 36th Senatorial District, the Honorable John Morlock from the 37th Senatorial District, the Honorable William Bro, the 73rd Assembly District, and the Honorable Stephen Choi from the 68th Assembly District. Lots of wherases, and I'm going to get right to the bottom here. South Orange County Community College District has evolved into a dynamic force striving to improve the quality of life of its members and the general community, with its students receiving a 17.4% return on their investment of time and money. Where did I go? Local taxpayers receiving -- oh, this is good. Receiving a 15.3% return on their investment. You guys need to use these statistics.
Can you come to the meetings more often?
Yes. And the district providing a return investment of $4.78 for every dollar appropriated to that. Okay. That deserves applause, y'all. Come on. Thank you.
You want to keep going.
I know, I will. In its 50th anniversary year, South Orange County Community College District celebrates its diverse student body, which brings worldly perspectives and inquisitive dialogue, as we heard tonight from those of you that attended the inauguration in Washington, D.C., as well as its faculty, staff, and administrators, who devote their lives and careers to creating a better future for others. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Senators Patricia Bates, Senator John Morlock, Assembly Members William Bro and Stephen Choi, that they draw the attention, the special attention of the public, to the 50th anniversary of South Orange County Community College District, commend its students, teachers, staff, and administrators for the outstanding success of the school's educational programs, and extend best wishes for the school's continued success in the future. Amen.
Thank you, Rhonda, and thank Senators Bates and Morlock and Assemblyman Choi and Bro. We know the Bro's well as well. His wife serves on our foundations, Saddleback College Foundation Board of Governor, so got a lot of big community here. We are represented by two supervisors in the county government, and I'd like to ask now Sergio Prince to come forward from the Office of Lisa Bartlett, County Supervisor.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here on behalf of Orange County Supervisor Lisa Bartlett, who attended Saddleback College, and that says a lot about what your student bodies can go on to do and become after graduating from this college. I too attended Irvine Valley College, so we are both products of your district. But having said all that, there's nothing I can say that hasn't already been said or that you don't already know about the district and what it's done, but from a personal level in the time I've lived in South Orange County, this college is a jewel. And Irvine Valley College is a little outside our district, but we -- our office works very closely with Saddleback College, with Dr. Burnett, who's going to be very sorely missed here, and also, you know, for what you do with veterans. I mean, the Veterans Memorial out there, it's just an amazing tribute that I'm not aware of any other colleges that has anything like that, and the work that you do on behalf of your veterans. And our office is very honored and privileged to work with Terrence Nelson and the rest of your faculty and staff that work on behalf of the veterans, and not to mention your Saddleback Emeritus Institute, that is also one of the crown jewels of this college, and we work closely with them and Dan Pudel. And so we're very proud of our partnership and collaboration with the college. But without any further ado, I have this proclamation from Supervisor Lisa Bartlett that we would like to present to you, not just for your 50 years of outstanding service to the community, but also 50 years of academic excellence. So on behalf of Supervisor, I'd like to present you with this.
Thank you, Sergio. And I think our last speaker in this segment is El Telo, I think someone who's familiar to this district, who's representing County Supervisor Todd Spitzer.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you. Congratulations on 50 Congratulations on 50 years. Getting a college degree, it makes a big difference. It's a life changer. It's made a big difference in my life, it's also made a big difference in my sister's life. I grew up in a rural town in, in central California, and oddly enough, Glenn Rockmore went to community college right nearby, about 30 miles away, in Porterville College. He, he grew up in Ridgecrest, but then he chose to go there. You know, I've been, been blessed to, to have a college degree. I was the first in my family to go to college, and you know, I think less and less you hear, you hear that. It, now, more and more people are going to college, and I, you don't really seem to hear that as much, but Irvine, Irvine Valley College is within, within the 3rd Supervisory District, which is represented by Supervisor Todd Spitzer, and I just wanted to offer congratulations for the past 50 years, and best wishes on, on the next 50 years.
Thank you very much.[669.13][669.13](applause). Did I miss anybody representing city, county, congressional, state legislature? All right. Well, I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight and honoring the work we do in the community, especially educating students. We also received a proclamation from the City of Tustin, which is our partner, our city partner for our Advanced Technology and Education Park, which we're trying to build and develop there, and Congressman Daryl Issa's office is also sending us a resolution, and we look forward to receiving that. It means a lot to us that you're all here. We focused on the elected officials and, and their staff who's represented us, but obviously, we're focused on educating our students, that's our top priority, but we couldn't do so without an incredible faculty, staff, management team here. It's an amazing district, amazing place to be, and we're so fortunate to represent you in, in, in this community. I'd like to ask the elected officials and their staffs to hang around for a few minutes because we're going to read our own resolution into the record and then call a vote, and then we'll take a short break and have some juice and snacks, and what else? Cupcakes.[745.98][745.98](laughter) So give us about 30 seconds here.
So, it's my pleasure.
Mr. Lang.
My pleasure to read the resolution from the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees, dated February 27th, 2017. From 1967 to 2017, South Orange County Community College District celebrates 50 years of Valentine's Day gift of education for our community. Whereas, February 14th, 2017, marked the 50th anniversary of the South Orange County Community College District, and whereas, 125,000 taxpayers in 1967 voted by a margin of two to one to form a junior college district, bringing higher education opportunities to the residents from San Clemente to Tustin, and whereas, the South Orange County Community College District now serves more than 68,000 students per year, employs 4,000 faculty and staff, serves a population of nearly 1 million residents, and contributes nearly 2.4 billion in combined economic activity and public benefits, and whereas, it's hard to imagine the humble beginnings of Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, two vibrant community colleges that consistently rank among the top 10 in the state, for they are the cornerstones in our community, providing opportunities for all who can benefit, and whereas, today we celebrate a diverse population of students who keep us young at heart, and we celebrate the faculty, staff, and administrators who devote their lives and careers to creating a better future for others. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby celebrates our community's trust, our promise to the community, and the vision given to us in 1967, because our students are at the heart of everything we do. Signed by all of the trustees of this board. Thank you.[870.20][870.20](applause).
I think now we're going to do a roll call vote on the resolution.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Witt.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student Trustee Ford.
Aye.
Seems the motion carries unanimously.[896.94][896.94](laughter) All right.[901.13][901.13](applause). Are we going to now pause for a photograph?
We're going to do a quick reception.
Okay, we're going to now take a short recess for a reception and some photographs, and thank you all again. We'll be back shortly for the remainder of the agenda.
I'm not going to wear my name tag, I must think, because...
Well, we'll wear it, but if I haven't...
And I'll start off this week with Trustee Witt.
Thank you. February was more of a quiet month for me, but I did enjoy going just a few days ago to the Saddleback College Art and Photo Exhibit. It was the faculty art and photo exhibit, and I spent a lot more time than I thought I would, and I really looked into all the art, and I can't see myself being an artist, but I thought, how did they get that idea? Do you ever wonder that? You know, you look at something, you go, how? Not what is it, but how? So I really enjoyed that, and I appreciate all the efforts of the, the Fine Arts Department and the faculty who contributed. And I'm hopefully going Wednesday this week to the OCSBA, the Joint Session, their dinner meeting, and I look forward to finding out what's going on in the state through K through 12.
Thank you. Trustee Milchiker.
Okay. First of all, happy 50th anniversary, everyone, and Dave Lang said he has given me some of his time, so I'm going to be going over a little bit, but he promised I could have some of his time, so. I want to mention that the district, our district is proud to host the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force this year, and we're reviewing a list of 59 federal regulations identified for possible cuts. We discussed some new federal bills, including one that would authorize Pell Grants to be used for job training programs at community colleges. The state legislative bill deadline was February 17th, so there'll be many new bills to review. We're advocating for an increase in Prop 98 split for the May revise if revenues are higher, and this could mean a gain of up to $45 million for the statewide community college system. We reviewed the $150 million Guided Pathways Initiative and Trail Bill Languages, which provide the framework for allocating funds, the trailer, and, and we intend to provide input for a mental health bill and possibly tie-in for student veterans, health centers, and homelessness on campus. We continue to monitor state versus federal issues related to undocumented students and DACA. Last summer, the IVC debate team toured China. In this spring, they reciprocated by hosting two Chinese debate teams, one from Beijing and one from Xi'an, from two colleges. IVC coordinated this visit, and last week, the Chinese teams debated the IVC teams on the topic of the Russia, Russian cyber interference into the US elections. And just like in China, they had friendship teams, where there was one Chinese student and one American student on each team, and the debates were in English. People asked me that. The International Student Program at Saddleback College had an agent open house, and they toured our facilities and met with deans and professors all over Saddleback College to show them Saddleback College facilities and the disciplines. The agents were impressed, and so was I. This culminated in the Chinese New Year celebration for our agents and for our international students. Astounding inventions, many of the professors at Irvine Valley College were able to bring their engineering students to the campus, and they were able to build bottle rockets with the students, shoot off bottle rockets, make goop, manipulate a huge robot, and learn how great IVC is. The Science Lecture Series at Saddleback College had Dr. Michael Thaler, a NASA scientist, Dr. Michelle Thaler, excuse me, a NASA scientist spoke about the habitable worlds in outer space and beyond. She showed some incredible clips, NASA clips, that you can see online if you want, of the moons and the planets, and it turns out that there's one moon of Jupiter and one moon of Mars that are covered with ice, and, and there's similar amino acids they are, that they have in living things. So there's a possibility there might be some primordial soup underneath the ice, underneath the ice and in some water. This piqued the imagination of our, of our STEM students at Saddleback College. I attended the Saddleback Classified Lunch with President Burnett, and also the Saddleback Art Reception, professors past and present for our STEAM students. I just want to let you know that these programs are indicative of the excellent educational opportunities we provide to our motivated students. No wonder Saddleback and IVC remain, rank among the top community colleges in the state, ranking number one or number two in transfer, and getting top billing on schools.com, and ranking near, near the top in just about every other metric. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Very briefly, first, happy 50th. Want to thank all of the folks from the city, county, and other areas of government that came and provided resolutions to us tonight. That was very thoughtful, and in the interest of time, I'll forego additional remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. Trustee Wright.
Again, happy 50 years for the district. It's wonderful that we've been in, in business for 50 years. I wanted to welcome the members of the ACCJC Accreditation Site Visit Team, but it looks like they've left, but I wanted to applaud them for being here, but it looks like they've left. I wanted to report on just five different events that I attended this month of February. My wife, Janice, and I attended the Final President's Cup basketball game at Irvine Valley College. TJ Pennergrass was also there. This was on Wednesday, February the 1st. Saddleback College won both men's and women's basketball games, and as a result of this, since they'd already had their first President's Cup playoff here at Saddleback, this was on, on January the 6th, for, for the first time in, in a number of years, Saddleback won all four games, and as a result, they were presented the President's Cup. I also attended the President's Classified Staff Luncheon, along with Trustee Milchiker, on Friday, February the 3rd. The presentation focused on one book, one college, CTE, career pathways, student mental health issues, accreditation, and other events. Then I wanted to talk for just a minute about, on Wednesday, February the 8th, I attended the District Audit Committee, and then I also attended the Special Board Meeting, talking about accreditation, in which we were learning more about the role the Board would have in accreditation. And then finally, I wanted to mention that this morning, the Board Officers met with four members of the accreditation teams, two from Saddleback and two from IVC. We had a wonderful meeting this morning, and it was a very positive meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Wright. I think you covered some of the items I was going to cover. I did attend the IVC Astounding Inventions event. It's a pleasure to hand out the awards to the students, and I think another very successful year, several hundred students and their parents were there, and if we even inspire a handful of them to pursue a pathway in academics or professional life in, in, in one of the STEM fields, then we've done our, our job, so that's awesome. And congratulations to the foundation staff as well. I know how much work goes into that, so make sure you let them know. I also attended our Special Board Meeting on accreditation and education, and I, I think it made us better prepared for what's happening right now with the accreditation. The chancellor's search is continuing. We do have a search committee in place, and that process is moving along, and we do expect to meet the timelines that we set out, so it is our hope. Over the next few months, we will have a chancellor in place. There is a process we have moving forward, and, and I think it's moving forward as we would like it to be so far. I was, I had a chance to be on Laguna Woods TV. Again, we do a rotation among the trustees here, and it's just a reminder of what we do in terms of lifelong education, really, in Laguna Woods, and in fact, I was at a dinner last night with some older adults. I think, maybe I'm one of them now, but maybe they were a little older, and, and they, I think most of the people at the dinner had either taken a class through the Emeritus Institute, or was, was about to. And then lastly, I had a meeting recently with the leadership of Saddleback College Foundation, with Anthony Ferry and Don Rickner, and tried to help them do the, the good work they, they're doing, provide any support that I can through, through the community and my relationships, because I think what they do is, is so important to advancing our district, which is scholarships to students so they, they can afford to attend this great place. Thank you very much. Trustee Prendergast.
All right. First, I want to just lament not being able to make it to the astounding inventions. Didn't know a dog could pull their ACL, but ours did, so that was fun. So that's what I was dealing with all day. And then, February 1st, as Trustee Wright mentioned, attended the second game of the President's Cup, and Saddleback had a good season, unfortunately, it's over. I did read that they did not advance into the, into the tournament, which is unfortunate because they were doing really, really well. But we always look forward to the, the game between the two. It's always close and, and well contested, and it's, it's a fun time. I was, before the opportunity to attend the Globetrotters at Saddleback, that was, I, I haven't seen the Globetrotters since Metallica, Lemon, and Curly, so, but, but the newer, the newer members are just as entertaining, and, and it just, it is such a great show, and if you ever get the chance to see them, don't go necessarily to watch the Globetrotters, go to watch the kids. Oh, my Lord, they, they have, the, the look on those kids' faces, they're just, it's just, it's a great show. It's just a great show. And then finally, I just wanted to mention the dinner on Wednesday night that Trustee Witt mentioned, the Orange County School Board Association, one of the presentations they're going to have is CubeSat program. You guys were talking about STEM. All the high schools in Irvine are collaborating on a project, project to actually launch a satellite. One, one school, so you have Uni, Northwood, Woodbridge, Irvine High, Beckman, and then recently, I believe, Portola Hills added to the, to the list, but each has got a different component of the satellite. One has the motherboard, one has the navigation, one has the tracking, and it's just an amazing project that these kids are involved with and have the ability to do, and so there'll be a presentation at that dinner on that CubeSat program, so.
5:30.
So hopefully you can make that. It should be very, very well, a very informative session. That's all for me.
Thank you. Student Trustee Ford.
Hello, everyone. So right before the board meeting began tonight, I got some very sad news. Unfortunately, our wonderful tech people here fixed the voting system, so I will not be using my thumb up and down for this meeting. I know, you guys are going to miss it, but.
I'll miss it. You'll miss it most of all.
I know.[1644.13][1644.13](laughter). So anyways, what was I going to say? Oh, I'm sure he's not going to want me to do this, but I'd like to welcome the student trustee from Long Beach City College, who's here in our audience tonight, Alejandro Lomelli. Can you stand up and be acknowledged?[1660.13][1660.13](applause). He's going to kill me later for that. So I unfortunately, I went to some of these events, I got to go to the homecoming, and I think President's Cup, but I haven't had a chance to go to many of them. I wanted to go to astounding conventions, just didn't, time didn't work out that way, classes and such. I wanted to mention, and maybe this is President Rockmore, you can help out with this, a lot of students, including the student government, a few club organizations and things on campus, have brought an issue to me that's come up, and it's kind of seeming like a student equity issue, that emails about campus events, cultural events are going on at campus, things that are happening in the, in the Canopy Center, things that are happening with the Office of Student Equity are not getting emailed out to the entire campus as a whole, so I receive emails from those offices because I'm on their email list, but I don't receive like a Sherpa or something from the campus. I've received ones about the Wi-Fi changes and a few other changes that have happened when it's like construction or something like that, but not about these events, and so students not knowing about these things that are happening on campus, I feel, and this is the concern that a lot of students and the student government have brought to me, is it's like this is a student equity issue, because if students don't know about these things that are going on, how, you know, how are we, how are we meeting with those underrepresented groups if they don't even know these things are happening on campus?
Let me just, hold on a minute. Here a second, it's on. You know, I think, Trustee Ford, I think, I think most of the communications that we do are through other forms of social media, so through the Facebook, certainly there are Sherpa pushes, but I believe we've avoided email, and I can kind of defer to Bob to agree or disagree, but there, there was a time that we avoided that because the sheer number of students that would be involved in that kind of push, our system, it would bring the system down. At least that was true at a time, may not be true today. But one thing that is true, we use a whole myriad of other kinds of social media to get the information out to the students.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to talk to you offline to get more details.
Yeah, thank you so much. Sorry to kind of throw that up, it's just, I didn't know where to go with it. It's just, I didn't know where to go with it.
No, it's a good, good place to go. I'd be happy to talk about it.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Chancellor's report.
I will keep this very brief since we had our break and our 50th anniversary celebration. I just wanted to say that we're very pleased to host accreditation visiting teams for accreditation of Saddleback and Irvine Valley Colleges this week, and we were happy to see them attend at least a portion of our board meeting this evening. Nothing is more important than our accreditation efforts, and there are many people at the colleges and district-wide that deserve our gratitude for working collaboratively on this very important effort. And so I want to thank them again. And I also wanted to thank everybody for joining us this evening to commemorate the 50th years of service to our community and for joining us out there and to our little mini celebration. And with that, I will end my staff report.
Thank you, chancellor. Now we move on to president's reports. Looks like IVC is leading off.
There we go. Great. I'm going to leave most of my report to the written portion, mainly because, as you might imagine, we have been very immersed in the accreditation process. It was great to see the two chairs here tonight for just a little bit. The primary portion of our visit will happen tomorrow, and albeit a little bit unusual, I'm actually going to be involved in about four interviews tomorrow, and very much looking forward to that. It's standard one and standard four that I'll be talking about. So I want to congratulate our team. I am so impressed about how much attention is being paid to making sure the team has exactly what they need, that the room is set up appropriately, and all, accepting the training that we've been doing and talking about the process and what to expect. All of that is being very well absorbed. But I tell you, there's an awful lot of work going on, on the ground. And just wanted to make sure that I thank everybody that was involved in that. I'm confident that everything's going to go wonderful, and that we'll have a good, good exit interview and a good result. Thank you.
Thank you. President Burnett.
Yeah, the same thing as at Saddleback. We're very pleased at our accreditation today. We had a welcoming reception that, we introduced the team. We had about, gosh, there must have been 80 people or 50, 70 people, I don't know, but it was a really festive event, believe it or not. And the team went up there and said they'd never seen so many smiling faces. So that was pretty wonderful to start off, and it's been that through the whole day. So we look forward to having, the next of the week, being a very productive accreditation visit, and I think you'll all be very proud of our college and our district. With that, first, you heard today our students that got to have what they said, which was a, an experience of a lifetime, and it truly was. It was 11 students, I'm sorry, nine students that had gone, including Lucy, and she'll probably maybe mention it a little bit, and I think she did at the last board meeting, that got to go and experience this. And I want to report back that we should all be very proud of how our students represented our college, represented students and citizens in our country. They were phenomenal at that trip. I mean, I've been a camp counselor my whole life, and been with students my whole life, and I'll tell you, I don't think I've ever seen a group of students be more mature, more professional, more measured, and very popular. Every event we'd go to, they were swarmed by all the elected officials, swarmed by all the visitors and people at all the events. And I don't know if they ever told you the events, but the, the actual itinerary of what they did was truly remarkable. With that, we have some big events coming up tomorrow, and Lucy can talk a little bit more about it, I don't want to steal her thunder, but we have our new Freedom of Speech, First Amendment series of workshops, and she'll talk a little bit about it, but our first one is tomorrow. We invite you all to come. As you know, these are rising issues. One Book One College, right before that, actually, at noon, we're going to have one of the sessions and panel discussions. The annual South Orange County Economic Coalition Economic Report Luncheon, please come at March 10th, 2017. In fact, I think Dean Tang was here. There he is, back there. He's the author of the report, doing it for three years, and every year it gets better and better. Really encourage you to come. It's absolutely, it's something we should be very proud of in our community to be able to hold this event. And finally, April Fool's Day is our gala, on April 1st, and hopefully you all got the invitations. Please come. This is sure to be a great event, and it's the first time at the Ritz-Carlton. Other than that, happy 5-0.
Thank you. Hey, can we swap out our elected officials for our students?
You know what? I was almost going to go there in my comments, but I didn't, but I was going to say, they handled themselves a lot better. They handled themselves a lot better than, we'll say, a lot of older people in the audience.
I'll take our students any day of the week, over many of them. Go ahead. Lucy Hendricks, Saddleback College, ASG.
Did I push it? Okay. I'm still learning the new microphones. So yes, to talk about the DC trip for just a moment, I know I talked about it a little bit last month, but I wanted to thank the students that were able to attend tonight and tell you all a little bit about their experience and public comments. Like Todd said, we did have nine students able to attend, and those that weren't able to come tonight did want me to pass along that they echo the sentiments of their peers. It was a wonderful, wonderful experience for all of us. And tonight was actually really wonderful because a lot of the elected officials and staff members that helped make the experience so great were here. So we were able to thank them in person for putting together such a cool trip for us. So really great way to conclude that. This month has been really busy, especially for our campus clubs. On February 14th, Valentine's Day, we had a club rush that over 20 clubs participated in. We had a lot of students come out, joining clubs, which is always great to see. And then also, just last week, we had a really great event that was put on by the Saddleback College Pre-Law Society and Model United Nations, that was a build-a-wall event. And they actually constructed a wall in the quad to represent the wall that has been discussed by President Trump, and we had students from both sides come and discuss their thoughts and their thoughts on the election. Really, really wonderful event. As President Burnett said, we are kicking off our free speech series tomorrow. So for those of you that I've gotten to talk to personally about this, you know I am very, very excited. So it's called hashtag Use Your Voice: Understanding the First Amendment in the 21st Century. So we're doing different topics related to free speech and academic freedom for the next three weeks, and then we'll have a break for spring break, and then our fourth one. So like we said, tomorrow is the first, from 2 to 4 in the quad, we'll be having four of our Saddleback College professors discussing free speech in the digital age, focusing on how technology and social media and all these fun things that we have have changed the application of free speech. Really, really excited about that. And then lastly, this Friday, we're actually taking a cue from the board of trustees and doing a listening lunch. And so we're trying to introduce ourselves to the campus, be better known to our student constituents to be able to come to us when they have problems, know who their student government is and what that representation looks like. So we're doing that on Friday, so excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. ASG, IVC.
Hello, good evening, guys. First, I want to congratulate on the district of its 50th birthday. I wasn't born yet, but...
All of us were.
I know a history of what a 50-years-old man can be.
Students exclude.
So first, our students have been participating in campus-wide committee, including specs, BDRPCs, and student equities. And second, we are reviewing, students, faculties, and staff have been reviewing the teachers of the year nominations, and the final recommendations will be sent to President Rockmore on Friday, March 3rd. For, the ASG of IVC has been evaluating itself by sending surveys to, to our commissioners as well as the legislative branch to evaluate ourself, and we're gonna, I'm going to get evaluated as well, and then we're going to evaluate our directors as well, so that we know the advantage and disadvantage of ourself, and to improve upon that. Fourth, we, we are beginning our election process for 2017, 2018 academic years. Over 75%, 75 students have submitted their applications, and our online elections will be taking place on Tuesday, March 7th, and Wednesday, March 8th. Over 200 students and community members attended the homecoming and president club, and I want to congratulate, offer my congratulations to the homecoming kings and queens, Omid Mohammed and Berkeley Sanders Vaskis. Last but not least, ASG Wednesday, we're going to held an ASG Wednesday on Thursday, March 2nd, from 11 to 2 PM. This gives the student an idea of what we do, and we do our report on what we have done to them. We, on February 8th to February 15th, we have our African-American Heritage Month celebrations, and then on March 15th, this upcoming, March 15th, we're having our Persian New Year celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to our 4.0, which we've already covered in detail, our 50th anniversary. I'm sorry? Oh, sorry, yes. Are there any board requests for reports? Trustee Lang.
Yes, I've asked chancellor Fitzsimmons to bring back for your consideration in our next board meeting, a request, my request for a report that would look at the existing policies that call for administrative regulations for which such regulations have not yet been drafted, showing what the date was that the policy was approved and what the status of those regulations are.
So that's a request that's going to be for in the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Anything to add? Okay, we don't?
I think it's a perfectly acceptable request, and we're definitely willing to do that, so for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other board requests for reports? All right. So let's move on to the consent calendar, 5.0. Do we have any polls? Okay, I've got three here. We're going to poll 5.8, 5.13, and 5.14. And is there a motion to move? Oh, trustee Wright.
I'd like to poll 5.1.
Okay, so we've polled 5.1, 5.8, 5.13, and 5.14. Any other polls? Okay, is there a motion to move the remainder of the items? It's a motion by trustee Wright, and a second by trustee Milchekar. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote on the balance of the items. So someone hasn't voted.
It's me. Where did I get this out? Pardon me?
On the floor.
On the floor?
No, no.
Press the button until it's on the floor.
Yeah, no, you could, but that's...
Do we need to redo?
Yes.
Oh, oh, here we go.
One, two, three.
Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote, right? Good. Right on. Okay. Want to address 5.1, trustee Wright?
Yes, I was looking, was looking at 5.1. There was a couple of issues here. There was no motion made and seconded for the balance of the consent calendar to be approved for 5.1. And we had, we had five items that were removed for discussion and action.
You're talking about the minutes?
Yeah, this is the minutes. But there was no motion made and seconded to approve the balance.
Maybe there was, the motion wasn't actually recorded in the minutes, maybe.
Yes.
That's what probably assumed happened.
So that was my fir, that was my first one. And then the second one was that item 5.15, they have it as being polled, and it was never polled. It was part of the original consent item, 5.15.
So you want that polled?
Well, it says they, it was put in the, in the minutes that it was on a motion made by trustee Wright and seconded by trustee Pendergast, this item was approved, but it was never polled. And then the final thing was that, as you look, as you look through, you see, you'll see the report 7.0 before the 6.0 general action items. There was there.
I think that's because we advanced the...
Seven?
I was in the agenda.
Okay, 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 that's right. You went out of order for the first one. Okay.
So we need to make a correction to the, to the printed minutes? Do you want to move the item?
I'll move it.
Motion from trustee Wright, and a second from trustee Lang to move 5.1. Any further questions? Go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one student advisory yes vote, one trustee, I already said trustee absent. Okay, 5.8. I think we have a correction in 5.8.
Yes. The item itself, as in the board packet, is correct. It's just that on the agenda itself, the summary of the item on the agenda, when it's describing 5.8, will need to be corrected to match the board item. So I just wanted to read into the record, or state for the record, that we will be making that correction to the online version of the agenda as well as the written version. That's all.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Any further questions on this item? Go ahead and vote. Have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and one student advisory yes vote. Agreement for independent auditing services.
Yes, I was just going to ask Kim McCord just to briefly go over this item, just for a minute or two, to explain what this item is and how it came to the recommendation, and including the audit committee's part in the recommendation. And then if she could stay at the podium for the next one as well, 5.14.
Sure. So we went through a process that is outlined within the board agenda, where we had a committee that reviewed the RFP, and then we put that RFP out on the street, and we did get several responses. We had a subcommittee of our vice presidents of administrative services and our audit manager who reviewed all the proposals, and they narrowed it down to three to interview. And we held those interviews. We also had members from the college's student services and foundations who attended those interviews, and we ultimately came up with one recommendation. We did review all of this with the audit committee, and they were very happy with our selection. It's a very good firm that we've used in the past, and they are well-known in the community college system for doing audits. So we're really excited to have them back. Are there any questions about the process?
Thank you for doing that. I think I was the one who asked for the clarification. I appreciate that. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the item? Motion from trustee Prendergast, motion, second from trustee Lang, seeing no further discussion, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. 5.14.
This is the retiree OPEB trust actuary report and recommended funding, and it can get very confusing on what a recommendation is, because this is a lot of unusual terminology when it comes to actuarial reports. So I just wanted to ask if you could just go over the recommendation, particularly related to the funding of the normal cost, what that is, and what, what the excess is in the count.
Sure. Yeah, first of all, there is a surplus, so the, the audit firm, or actuary firm does an actuarial evaluation of what, how much we should have set aside now for all retirees and all current employees, assuming we've been paying all along, so that when they retire, there's enough to fund their benefits for the rest of their anticipated lifetime. So that was the 102 million, 102.6 million that was identified in the report on... So that was the 102 million, 102.6 million that was identified in the report on page eight. And then they do an actuarial valuation of our assets that we have set aside. As you know, we put the money into the trust every year. And so the net result is we have a surplus of 300,000. That's actually really close because this report's done every year. There's a lot of assumptions, things change, and every year we're off. But this is actually a super close one, so we were pleased with that. As you remember, or you may not remember, last year we made a change in our assumptions on our rate of return. We went from 7% to 6%, and we funded that deficit because of that change in our anticipated earnings. So it worked out very well that, again, we're, we're funded right where we should be. But part of that is we have to put the money in every year. Our normal cost is the amount for each employee that is working. Every year they work, we put in an amount for them so that when they retire, the money's there. So that is the 4.6 million. That is a higher number than it's been in the past. It used to be about 3.6 million, and that's because we're using the lower rate of return. So we will take this out of our basic aid funds after this is approved. It'll be right off the top for next year.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Trustee Lang.
Yes, so if you're a financial nerd like I am, you get real excited in reading these kinds of reports. But it's very interesting if you actually, you know, kind of go through some of the analysis here. They really do some testing of the numbers, if you will, to determine, okay, what would happen if, you know, the, the actual rate is a half a percentage less or a half a percentage more? And what does that look like in terms of the amount that we might have to fund? And so, you know, it's, I think it's interesting information, very informative. We don't know where the rate's going to go. You know, as Kim had mentioned, there's a lot of assumptions that are made here. But certainly, you know, the fact that we've established this is quite unusual. And the fact that we're actually funding this and have funded this to the extent that we, that we have, I think is probably unusual, I would have to say, among all the community colleges in the, in the state. If you look at one of the schedules, it does show what the total cost would be as you play this thing out. And it's the, kind of the delta between what we've funded so far and what that total cost is that comprises this normal cost that we're talking about that has to be amortized and paid into the fund on an annual basis.
I would make one other comment as we are embarking on a retirement incentive. That hasn't been completely solidified yet. But should that go through, that will have an impact on this because they make assumptions on the average age of retirement. And if this is accelerating folks' anticipated retirement date, then that may have an impact. So next year we'll know if people have retired earlier, and we'll see that impact next year.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, we have a motion to move the item. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Any additional questions on 5.14? We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Moving on to our general action items. 6.1, OCSBA Marion Bergerson Award nomination, one of our finest. She was one of our finest public servants. So is there anyone on this board who we think should be nominated? Or who wants to be nominated? Trustee Lang?
Maybe I'll try.
Sure, go ahead.
Do we have a nomination? Trustee Lang.
I'll move that we nominate trustee Milchiker for consideration for this award.
That's an excellent nomination. Do, do we, trustee Lang is nominated, trustee Milchiker for consideration to, to receive the Marion Bergerson Award? Do we have? There's a motion. Oh, you have to put it into a motion, correct.
Terry, Terry seconded.
Terry Witt has seconded. Do we have, you have the motion? Good? All right. Any, any, any further discussion? I think it's a terrific nomination, and trustee Milchiker well worthy of the, being considered. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. I think we're still waiting for a vote. Oh, we have five yes trustee votes, one abstention, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Well...
I'll try my best.
Good luck, trustee Milchiker.
Try to represent the board well, okay?
And I know that you will, I, I hope that you do, you move far along in that process. Well, well-deserving. All right, 6.2, ATEP resolution, adopt ATEP resolution, declaration of intention to enter into agreement with the IRWD and to conduct, conduct a public hearing at our next board meeting on March 27th.
I'll take that. So what this is, is something a little unusual that you're not used to seeing as a board. But we are, as you know, developing the ATEP property. And we have done, we're in the process of a county of orange land exchange agreement. And we have easements related to Irvine Ranch Water District as well as the next one, which is for Southern Cal Edison. And the way that California ed code works is that we have to actually have a resolution this month in which we are going to declare that we're going to intend to enter into an easement agreement this month and have that approved by our board, and then bring the actual easement agreement next month and have a resolution and approval of that. So this is our declaration of intention to enter into agreement with, in this case, on item 6.2, Irvine Ranch Water District for granting of easements for the ATEP property.
All right. And we need a motion and a second to approve this. We have a motion from trustee Milchiker, a second from trustee Witt. Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, six to zero, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. 6.3, another declaration of intention to enter into a grant of easement agreement.
This is exactly the same thing as 6.2, except it is with the declaration of intention to enter into grant of easement with Southern Cal Edison for the ATEP site.
Okay, and we have a motion from trustee Lang, a second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on 6.3. A motion carries by six to zero vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. So now 6.4. ASEP's ATEP Site Utilities Griffith Company. This is a revised contract amount.
No changes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Any questions or comments? Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, six to zero, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. 6.5, update of authorized signature list of board of trustees designated to approve documents and contracts. And they're listed in the exhibit. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Lang. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries, six to zero, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.6, board policy revision, including unmanned aircraft systems, drones, sick leave, faculty salary classification, except for discussion and approval. Is there a motion to approve? Well, we have several questions. But we need a motion and I think a second. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright. And starting off, question from student trustee Ford.
Yes, even though this was, we made an action on this at the last meeting. The board policy 5520, I reviewed it again and I was looking at it, and I think that there's some language in there that's a bit contradictory to the proposal of what we're trying to provide for students. So on 5520 reads, "The chancellor shall ensure procedures are established necessary to make on-campus shower facilities available to any homeless student who is currently enrolled in coursework, is current with enrollment fees, and is in good standing with the district." I think that that last part of the language, in good standing, it's almost a bit contradictory to like what we're trying to provide for that special population because if their standing changes with the campus due to them being homeless, like they go into academic or progress probation or some other thing, or if the board policy is on referring to what good standing is with the district change in the future, this board policy could then be kind of rendered useless. So it's just that last little bit, I'm concerned with that last little bit, in good standing with the district. And I don't know if that should be stricken from that language or if something else should be written in there because I feel that it's contradictory with what we're trying to do to provide for those special populations.
I'm just, I'm gonna, I know we have other speakers, but I want to recognize trustee Prendergast to talk about this item.
Yeah, in discussion, I, I think what would be important is to understand what the intent of that phrase is in, is for. If it's academic standing, then I think his point is very well-made because if they go into an F or something in a class because of their situation that is counterproductive of what we're trying to provide for them. If we're talking about disciplinary standing, that, it needs to be addressed that way. So if what they mean by good standing in the district is not be in disciplinary action, I think we need to phrase it that way to address that concern.
Yes, trustee Lang.
Also on that specific board policy.
I would be, this sites ed code as reference, and I'd just be curious to know, what does ed code say about this specifically? Does anybody know?
Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Chair of the Board Policy and Administrative Regulation Council. This language came strictly from recommended CCLC language. And then the administrative regulation goes into more detail. And the intent was not to, you know, how would you practically do it anyway? I mean, basically, you know, the administrative reg is to allow flexibility so that each college can accommodate homeless students with this particular issue. So we could do one of two things. We could remove this out and get clarification language and bring it back because there's not, it's not like we have to have the BP approve this evening and bring it back for March. Certainly, we could do that so that it's not ambiguous.
Okay. Any other trustees want to comment on this item? Kathy Schmiedler.
Ah, it's now green. I believe that, that in good standing means academic standing. So if the board, if the board's intention is to mean not in any disciplinary problem, then we need to rephrase it to be clear that that's what we mean rather than the ed code meaning of in good standing. Thank you.
Trustee Prendergast, you want to?
Again, not to speak, I, I think the issue is, is that if, if you're trying to be accommodating and in their situation, as trustee Ford mentioned, if their situation puts them in a place where they're not in academic good standing, but they're still trying, I mean, they, that isn't, I mean, they were dealt a bad card in that situation, then yeah, you can strike that out. But if we're following ed code, we can't really necessarily strike it. So I think, I think, I guess the procedural thing for me to do would be to withdraw my motion for approval of the entire item and make the motion for everything except 5520 and amend it to, to table that or have it reviewed or resubmitted for review.
Okay. Trust, trustee Lang.
And before that occurs, I think we ought to, I'm sorry, I think we ought to talk about any issues that anybody else may have with respect to the other policy items to see if there's maybe more than one that needs to be separated.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, the item, the second has been withdrawn from the item. President Burnett, did you wanted to say, did you want to say something? No? Yes, that, that's likely to happen.
So I'm redoing my motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So my motion is for, to approve item 6.6 with, without BP 5520.
Well, it depends.
And then we'll go, and then I need a second to that. Then we can discuss if anybody has any issues with any of the other policies, and then we can amend it again if we need to.
Okay. Why, we want to wait?
We can't discuss, we can't discuss them until there's a motion.
Okay, right.
So I'm making a new motion.
Right.
Removing 5520 from the discussion.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to second that, which James...
There's a second.
Now if anybody wants to speak to any of the other board policies...
We've now, 5.5520 has been removed from the board policy items. Is there, are there any trustee, your backup, trustee Lang? You know, this system's doing some interesting things here.
Yeah, understood. Okay. I had a question on 4101.1, and I'm looking for probably some help from probably administration and maybe faculty with my concern here. And it has to do with number four. We've basically indicated that a grade of C or higher would need to be earned on coursework accepted for salary classification credit. And, and I'm just wondering whether we're setting the bar too low there and whether that ought to be higher than C average? And interested in some input about that.
Kathy Schmiedler.
Yes. I think that, my guess is that the rationale for saying C or better is that usually the borderline between pass and no pass is a C or better. So if somebody takes a class pass or no pass, then they are effectively, if they pass, getting a C or better, not discriminating what kind of C or better it might be. And so then we'd be, if we said B or better or pass, then people who take a class pass, no pass are being benefited.
Correct.
And people who decide to go for the grade are actually being hazarded.
Good point.
And if I can add to that, having done that myself for my credentials and things, there are classes that you'd want to take pass, no pass because you don't need a GPA boost or anything, you don't need a grade. You're just taking it for the credit for the advancement. And so, yeah, she's absolutely right. So to make it equal, someone who needs grade points and wants that will take it. But if something happens and they don't do as well as they'd like to and they get a C, they still get the credit. And they probably should have taken a pass, no pass all along, but they didn't, and that's their own decision. But putting people in a position where they have the choice of whether they want a pass, no pass, or a grade, but having it be equal regardless of what they choose is the function of having a C.
Okay.
C is an average grade. C is an average grade.
Trustee Prendergast, you're listed twice. Okay, you keep popping up. And it's a different spelling of your name. So do you have another comment? Because you're still up. All right, all right. Trustee... Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, I have, I have a question on two policies. On the 3950 unmanned aircraft systems, and I know this is new territory, but when it says the operation of unmanned aircraft systems, UAS, including drones, shall be limited to instructional use only, shouldn't it say instructional use only on our college campuses? I mean, it doesn't say where.
Well, don't these board policies apply to what takes place on our campuses?
So, you don't need to say that, then?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
I think it's implicit that we're talking about policies that occur on the campuses.
Okay.
This is just, this is a policy.
Chancellor Fitzsimmons, do you want to address that?
I would just like to say that the ER addresses that very much in detail.
Say that again.
The administrative regulation addresses it in detail.
So, are most of these regulations taken out of the Code of Federal Regulation and the US Code and public law? Mostly, these are legal terms taken out of these regulations?
This particular one, yes. And it's changed, it had changed over the past year significantly. And this one is primarily FAA regulations.
Okay, excellent, because all this stuff, as you know, is new territory and I know the details are addressed in the administrative regulations. And then, under item number 4119, academic ranking, where it says associate professor is number four, prior to this, my understanding was the associate professor meant a part-time professor at the colleges?
No.
No, that wasn't true?
No.
Oh, adjunct, okay, okay.
Adjunct, they're not associate.
Adjunct, okay, you're right.
Associate is an academic rank.
Oh, okay.
Assistant associate.
Okay. Well, I think this, I mentioned at another meeting, I think this ranking, I'm sure it's gone through the academic senate and it seems like it's good to give people ranking and when they retire, they could be, keep their ranking as an emeritus professor. And I, as long as it's gone through the rank, gone through the ranks, the rankings are a good idea. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Milchiker. Did you have another, who? Oh, Chancellor Fitzsimmons, you're still listed as wanting to comment. You're good? All right. Back to Kathy Schmider, then David Bougay.
I just wanted to comment with the unmanned aircraft. They might be used, for example, on school-sponsored field trips or club trips or something, so they might not always be on district policy, but if they're under the aegis of district use, that the policies would still pertain. So, it really isn't about our property so much as our-
As their district.
As our district functions.
Yeah, that's a good point because you don't want students to start flying drones around our field trips unless it's, unless it's a part of the academic program of what they're doing.
Well, unless they're doing it in ways that are permitted by the district. I would like to say, however, that I've heard some feedback from marketing in particular that this is overly restrictive because marketing would like to be able, for example, to use drones to take photos of campus and other facilities. We have a wonderful movie, Realtors Do It, for example. They'll fly over a property. And so, some of our restrictions may be overly restrictive unless we can, can really formulate them carefully.
It's done at weddings, too. They just fly over the wedding and take photographs of-
So, all of the details are in the AR, but, but we're going to need to be very careful about that.
But if marketing does want to be able to use that, then this language is too overly restrictive. That's in the board policy.
Can I just interject one second?
I would love you to.
So, on the unmanned aircraft systems, no matter who uses it, they have to have a pilot's license. They have to be certified. All that is described in administrative regulations. If there is a district purpose such as that, there's an exception process and we would look, certainly look at that and allow a contract. For instance, I don't think marketing would actually be flying the drone themselves to be entered in an agreement and those people, we would have to just make sure that they had the proper, you know.
I just wanted to raise it here because-
So, in that case, yes. So, I don't think their concerns are, are something that we can accommodate.
So, you think-
I agree. I don't think that their concerns can't be accommodated. I just wanted to raise the issue in case anybody on the board heard such things. Then, we've had a public conversation about it.
Well, right. But so, that, I guess, what I was asking is if the language is saying "shall be limited to instructional use only" is a fairly restrictive policy, does, would not to my, even in an AR, that doesn't accommodate an exception in an AR. If they, if marketing, for example, wanted to use a drone for photographs or whatever, I think it'd have to be changed to limited to district-approved activities or something instead of instructional use.
I defer to-
I mean-
The AR does allow for-
Then, the AR would be inconsistent with the board policy because of this, the language does say "shall," which is a very-
But it says "operation of." So, the idea was that we wouldn't allow just any person to operate them without, the internal operations of employees within our campus, the faculty and/or students, they have to be supervised. There's a whole sort of regulation to go with this.
I'm not, I, no, I mean, I wasn't even, this wasn't even calling my attention until the discussion took place, but I, I don't know how the AR could be implemented on the basis if, to accommodate that, but the way I read this. Did you, trustee Prendergast?
I mean, yeah, we just, we have to change the BP so the AR can do what it says it's doing. Because if the BP says instructional use only and then the AR says you can do a waiver, then the AR is not in compliance with the board policy. The board policy has to allow the AR to do that.
Right.
So, we need to add language or change it from, and I agree, I think trustee Jamal said it fine, it says "shall be limited to district-approved use only."
That's too, I'm sorry, but that is going to be way too flexible by saying something as vague as that.
But, but you can't have a board policy say instructional use only and then have an administrative regulation that counteracts the board policy.
A non-instructional exception.
You can't have a non-instructional exception in an AR if your board policy says instructional use only.
That'd be contradictory, right?
It has to be district-approved use only if the AR is going to say that you can do that. It, I mean, they have to work to-
We can pull it. I could bring it back next month. This is going to hurt some of the issues right now that we're having because we are right now.
But again, we can change the language now.
We currently have drones in place without this and there's some issues because we don't have pilot license for everybody. We really need to get this in place.
But instructional use only doesn't say it has to have a pilot license. It just says instructional use only. If we change that language to say district-approved use only, that's very restrictive but allows for the AR to do what it's doing.
That would be in the, in the, in the AR. I want to support you, but it's just not consistent the way it's written to have that exception.
Let's pull it and let me work on some language and bring it back that meets the intent of what you're trying to say without being-
Okay. Well, then, I guess I amend my motion now.
I was going to ask you to amend your-
My amended motion is now for board policy, or item 6.6, with the exception of 3.950 and 5520.
Correct.
The balance of the, the board policies in 6.6.
Is the, so that's the amendment?
Need to know, trustee Wright.
You accept that?
That amendment.
I accept that.
Okay. And I think you now have a question, trustee Wright?
Well, the only comment I was going to make was on the academic rank. This really, I mean, again, it mentions here, salary doesn't depend upon your academic rank, whereas at four-year schools, many times, the salary is depending upon your academic rank. So, this is just sort of an honorary title rather than a real title.
Right, and it says that.
I know, so.
So, now, we need to vote on the amendment.
David had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chancellor Bougay.
Just one comment. Trustee Milchiker, you were correct when it comes to the part-time faculty. If you look on B2, that really is the formal title of the adjunct faculty for the first six semesters. We officially call them lectures, although the term is seldom used. And you'll see it refers down to point number six. So, they could be called assistant professor, but we do have a lot of our part-time faculty, I have heard them and a lot of people have called themselves associate faculty.
I called myself an associate faculty.
So, yes, you are correct. The official title for a part-time faculty member is lecturer, according to this policy. And also, they can be called assistant professor after six semesters. So, that's just kind of, just to help you out there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
So, we need to vote on the amendment.
Motion to move 6.6 except for BP 3950 and BP 5520. We have a motion in a second.
Correct.
We have to vote on the amendment or remake the motion.
Why don't you withdraw?
Withdraw and remake the motion. All right.
Motion has been withdrawn. Is there a motion on the table?
Now, we have a motion for item 6.6 with the exception of 3950 and 5520 to be reviewed and revised.
For discussion, except for discussion in a-
Correct.
A motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Witt. Any further discussion? Is that you, trustee Wright?
No.
Okay, well, clear. Seeing no further questions, let's go ahead and vote on this motion. The motion carries by a six-to-zero trustee vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay. We- Well, you were very insightful. Trustee Prendergast.
Need to make a motion to extend the meeting to 9:30.
Second.
Well, I got the, I got, I got the electronic second, sorry, Marshall. So, a motion from, well, I got a motion-
Those motions and seconds were on the item.
Oh.
There's no way to do a motion second electronically for-
All right, a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchiker to extend the time of the meeting to 9:30 PM. All those in favor, say aye.
They don't, they don't, they don't have a way to do it.
Oh, okay.
Because it's not an agenda, it's not an agenda item, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. It's not an agenda item.
I see. There's, there's a glitch. There's incentive to always have our meetings meet in before nine so that they don't have to do this.
This is an eventful meeting. I like it.
Something called a 50-year celebration.
Yeah.
Yeah, it took some time.
You still listed as a speaker.
CJ keeps being listed as a speaker up here.
I can't get rid of you on my screen.
It's something they're doing when, when we speak.
All right. You going to put the motion in the second row?
There it is.
Now, the motion.
We have a motion from trustee Prendergast. Actually, well, we have a second from trustee Wright to go ahead and extend the meeting to 9:30 PM.
Oh, there it is.
Any further questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Okay, now, I think we're on to 6.7, additional board policy revisions.
No changes.
No changes to the item. We have a motion to approve. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright, and a question from student trustee.
Yeah, for, ah, there we go. There's the green light. For the board policy 5506, I was reading through the language as well and I noticed there's an ed code that's referred to in the Title V protections. The colleges of South Orange County Community College District shall make reasonable accommodations. Is that language that's taken directly from their advisement?
Yes.
Okay.
It's actually a legal term.
Okay, cool.
Legal term, yeah. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, in board policy 4004, collective bargaining, we had indicated our retreat and we've had discussion about trying to bring in aspects of interest-based approach and things. I'm just concerned, are we limiting ourselves to not actually attain that goal with some of the language in this, in this BP?
Can you be specific?
Well, it just, um-
This is specific to the public notice.
Just the public notice part? Okay.
Am I allowed to answer yet?
Yeah, go ahead.
If we decide, sorry, I should, if we were to decide to do a different approach to collective bargaining, I think that's something we could bring back to the board after discussions with the bargaining unit representatives. It, that's a, that's a process that would take some time. So, we wouldn't really practically be able to do that for this next round. But it's something that we can move toward as a goal. And what I'd suggest, we do that either at the board retreat, have that discussion, and then, then engage in discussions with the various bargaining unit representatives.
Okay.
And this particular policy is required by law. We have this called sunshining and this part of what's called the Brown Act. So, we have to comply with initial proposals. When you go into interest-based bargaining, though, you can go into other topics later on, but you have to have your initial proposals, sunshine, technically, the other ones do as well, but sometimes you can do them almost sequentially at the same time. But this is required by law. Yes.
Okay. Seeing no other questions on 6.7, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Oh, except for review and study. Yes.
So, vote.
Yep. Unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote, one trustee absent. Academic personnel actions, no changes to the item. Chancellor Fitzsimmons, did you?
I was going to ask Dr. Bougay to clarify the one question that came up regarding dance.
We did have a question come up on one of the positions where we have an equivalency for somebody that is a yoga instructor at IVC, but we were classifying the person as dance. And that is, you'll see on page, on exhibit A, page one of six, Lauren Agresti, she actually has experience with over a thousand hours of yoga and meditation. That department classifies yoga underneath the heading of dance. That's just a clarification purposes.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
So, yeah, I was the one that raised it. So, I'm, is she teaching dance or is she teaching yoga?
She's teaching yoga, but yoga is underneath the heading of dance.
Okay, that's the clarification that I needed. Thank you.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, actually, in that same paragraph, there needs to be a correction made. It says in spring 2017.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's how she got all those hours.
We're just forward-thinking as institutions, so it's just-
Well, that, what's that, 50,000 years celebrate, so, 20,000, whatever. Trustee Lang.
Oh, you've already covered.
Okay. We found a little glitch in the system tonight. All right. Seeing no further questions on 6.8, let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory abstention. Okay, 6.9, classified personnel actions.
We have one minor change on exhibit A, page two of 13. On the very bottom, the very bottom footnote that says, "related to Sophie Ling, library technician, library services, Irvine Valley." It is only Irvine Valley College. And please scratch out the Saddleback College.
Okay. Thanks for that correction. We have now, any other corrections?
No, sir.
Motion by trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Witt and a question from trustee Lang.
Okay, so, now that you've answered that question regarding the footnote, I wanted to be certain that Maximilian Ling will not be working for Sophie Ling.
Sophie Ling cannot supervise that person. So, that, they're both classified employees. So, the supervisor would be management person. But, yeah, but there are different categories between the two of them, but overall, you have a administrator or manager in charge of the department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on 6.9? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. I think we need unanimous, we have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and did you want to do another abstention?
Sorry.
Is this, is student advisory abstention? Okay. I didn't know if it was just a holdover from the, the last item.
I don't know, I was thinking of just-
Okay, just, but that, you wanted abstain?
Yes.
All right. Okay, 6.10, amendment to 2017, 2018. Okay, 6.10, amendment to 2017, 2018, tenure track faculty hiring authorization.
This is just amended to the previous list that the board already approved.
Motion for trustee Wright, and a second from trustee Milchacher. Any discussion, questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on 6.10. It's, it's going off and on, even though the green light is on. Fluctuating. All right, and I've noticed it, but, we have a unanimous trustee yes vote, and one trustee absent, and a student advisory abstention. 6.11, the annual report on first-year probationary faculty. Have a motion from trustee Milchacher, a second from trustee Lang. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. A unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory abstention. 6.12, second-year probationary faculty. Do we have a motion?
It's not there yet.
Good, we have a motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Witt. Any questions on the item? Go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory abstention, one trustee absent. 6.13, annual report on fourth-year probationary faculty. Do we have a motion to move the item? Motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Milchacher. Any questions on the item? Okay, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory abstention. All right. Here's my mic, but it's not working. Or crackling.
It's on, just, don't touch it.
Don't touch it.
You gotta put one in it like this, one over here.
Okay. 7.1, report, reports. Annual report on third-year probationary faculty. 7.2, Saddleback College and IVC speakers. 7.3, basic aid report. 7.4, facilities status plan, oh, go back up, 7.3, basic aid report, trustee Lang.
Yes, just real quickly, I had noticed on the very last page of this report, 404, that appeared to be a new format, I guess, which I had asked the chancellor about. And I thought it would be helpful maybe to have a, just a brief explanation of this item.
Sure. What we do is, once...
And how it's, how it's integrated in the...
Sure, sure, and I have Kim up there that can help too. The changes from the January 2017 report include a transfer of $940,943 remaining out of the balance of 17 projects. And we do that once a year before we start the basic aid recommendation cycle internally at the district, and that goes back to unallocated basic aid funds. I know one of the questions was, on page one of the report, when you're looking at those highlighted items in yellow, of those same projects, the dollars on the far-right column don't match the dollars on the last. So can you just explain how that works, Kim, for clarification for the board?
The amounts that are on the front page in yellow, those are the amounts that we spent this year. So we needed to retain those funds within those projects because they've already spent them this year. On the last page, those are the remaining funds that won't be used, that are going to be returned. So we typically have that section, but there's just nothing in it until this time of the year, unless something happens as an anomaly throughout the year. Just, just once a year, we do this.
So I guess my question is, is if I'm looking on page three of four, and I'm seeing uncommitted basic aid funds of 14, roughly $14.8 million, which I think is the amount of the reserve, does that include or not include the amount that's on page four?
It does include the $900,000.
Okay.
That was $13 million, I think, last month, so it reflects an additional million.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on 7.3? 7.4, facilities status report. Trustee Lang.
No, that...
Trustee Wright.
Just a question about what's happening with the task building.
ATAS building, as we are working our way through the issues with the village right now, line-by-line item. And we are in the process of hiring a consultant to work on the programming of the ATAS building as a newer concept to see exactly what we need for the future. And we will give you a little bit more detail at next board meeting.
Okay, so, because I know I, I keep, their faculty just keeps talking to me and saying we, we'd like to have a decision.
I think we, we would like to have the decision too, but it takes a little, little time for us to get there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. 7.5, monthly financial status report. 7.6, quarterly financial status report. 7.7, pension stabilization trust fund. 7.8, retiree OPEB trust fund. 7.9, pension rates and financial impact to the district. Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Yes, I'd like to have Kim Upcord and/or CM Bronspat speak to this, so we can explain what this item is.
Sure. This item, we are preparing for you since now that we know the stores and purse rate, and where they are trying to do the stabilization. Both purse and stores are reducing their investment income for the future years. So that's the first hit that we got. And now that we know that this rate is here to stay, not only for five years or 10 years, but they like to have it until 2045, '46. And the purse can change their rates almost every year, because they have that authority for them to come back to us. This is a so significant change from how we are conducting the business. We want, you know, the board is gracious enough to provide the dollar for us to set aside to mitigate some of the impact for the purse and stores rate increase. But we just need to start thinking in, in terms of future, how we are going to hold it up, because we have the funds until 2021. Beyond that, we need to start looking into how we are going to conduct our business for the district. As you can see, at the bottom line, is almost another $13 million more in next four years that we need to pay for purse and stores. It's, it's, we just wanted to make sure that if we have the information, we just bring it to your attention, that this is the information we have. And it is not something that we can mitigate in next four, five years. It is going to stay here for next 25 years. So we really need to find a long-term solution of how we're going to find a way to mitigate. The ACBO, working with the future governor's budget, constantly asking for additional dollar for the purse and stores rate increases. But as you already see, that 17, 18 budget is kind of tapering off. So if we see some of a difficult time in the budget years in 18, 19, and 19, 20, then we may not get as much sympathy from the governor either. But we just wanted to bring it to your attention. This is what we are seeing that as a future, on over and above 2015 and '16, we're looking at about $13 million worth of hit. And we will bring it back to you on a regular basis if we see here anything otherwise, good, bad, or ugly, doesn't matter. We just want to make sure that we are keeping you fully informed.
And we want you to do that.
Sure.
Thank you. 7.0, it looks like we have no...
Yeah, push, I did it again, don't move it.
No staff response, nothing to report on staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting. All right, moving on to reports from the administration and governance groups. Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, interim chancellor and board of trustee members, happy 50th. I wanted just to kick off tonight by say, well, kick off, end the night, by saying, acknowledging and welcoming...
Please don't kick it off.
I'm sorry, I know. By welcoming the ACCJC accreditation site visit team. They were on our campus today, and I really believe that we kicked off the week on a, on a really great note. Had some really great dialogue with them today, I feel like, so we look forward to the rest of the week.
Thank you. Faculty Association.
Good evening. First and foremost, we'd like to recognize the support that the board trustees, the, the district administration and college administrations have always given to faculty rights within the classroom. And, but in light of recent events that have happened in other districts, close by Orange Coast College specifically, and the ultimate reversal of the suspension of the student who clearly violated a education code policy by recording in the classroom. We would just urge the board and the administrations to continue their support, and hold everyone accountable to the same standard, and make sure that faculty can do their jobs and what they do in the classroom. So we hope that that continues, and thank you for the previous support you've given.
Thank you. IVC Academic Senate.
It gave up on me.
It keep giving up on me.
Yeah. I echo the comments of my colleagues welcoming the ACCJC site visit teams, and again commend the board for its commitment, your commitment to becoming educated, and on your roles, and on accreditation in general. And of course, echo Mark's concerns about academic freedom and free speech on our campuses, and commend interim chancellor Fitzsimmons for her periodic notes to the campuses to, about academic freedom and free speech, as well as to allay fears of our students from abroad. Please enjoy your mugs, courtesy of the IVC Academic Senate. These were bought, just so you should know, these were bought with foundation funds, not with general fund dollars. I'm sitting right here next to, next to somebody who would have something to say where I'd spend general fund dollars on, on these mugs. But I hope you enjoy them, and allow them to remind you of our role, and, as well as yours, and our relationships. So otherwise, you know, the faculty, as you might imagine, are continuing our normal work of educating our students, and other ways in which we promote student success in the library and in counseling. And of course, at least some of us are involved in the accreditation process as well. Good evening.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
No report.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
We are well into the season for faculty recruitment. We had a group go up to Los Angeles on January 28th, and also another one go up to San Francisco on February 3rd, for a total of 1,200 different people were going through and registering in the job fairs there. We also did something new this year. We went to a, a job fair at Brandmin University, which is local, so that was a new step for us. So that's new, we're trying to increase our pool that way. So we expect to have a good pool for job applicants for faculty in the spring. On February 9th, in this very room, we had an, our, our annual equal employment opportunity training, where employees can come and actually learn, and in a two-hour workshop, we bring in a representative from the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And so her and myself, we present, and she presents the legal side, I present the practical application, and, and for two hours, we train about equal employment opportunity on search committees, and how to be representative there. At the end, they're qualified with a certificate for three years to serve on a committee as a representative, so, so that's really positive. Seventy people attended that, it was really very positive. We even, even talked about the culture of EEO within the district itself. Last week, I had the privilege of speaking at the ACA conference on SB 1379, with Michelle Underwood from School Services, and I'm certain you know that bill off the top of your head, but in case you forgot, SB 1379 deals with part-time faculty seniority rights, and, and the need to negotiate that. So that's, that's required by law, so that'll be one of the issues coming up when we go into negotiations this next year. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
You have a, under 8.0, you have the written report regarding our KSBR and KSUN radio stations, 88.5. Last week, we have met for all-day meeting with a consultant, and also folks from the KSUN. Very productive day for Saddleback College and South Orange County Community College District. These are the, our scope of services lined up for, for them, basically overall vision, strategy, goals for the collaboration, why, why we are collaborating. Operating structure, how we are going to look for the operating structure in the future. What will be the programming? What will be the analysis of the programming, and what the recommendations will be? We are asking for a three-year business plan, in terms of what will be the new revenues, what will be the new expenses as well. And how are we going to do the branding and marketing, the recommendations, in the, in the future? How the 88.5 will sound like on, on the radio? Not from, not only here, but all the way to the valley, in Ventura and everywhere else. So we are looking at a lot more bigger exposure. Hopefully, by the end of April, we will be able to bring our collaborative agreement back to the board for a review first, and then for the approval. Our target is to wrap it up by the end of this fiscal year, by June 30th. And there will be enough timeline, so I just want to kind of fill you in. On the other note, I do appreciate for the opportunity for serving South Orange County Community College District, so thank you very much.
We thank you for, for serving. IVC Classified Senate.
Maria Nunez for Karen Martin. We have, we're getting ready for our Classified Staff Development Day next month, and we've been having learning lunches that have been going very well. And also, Dr. Rockmore has been very supportive of our classified leadership going to the Classified Leadership Institute in June, so we're excited about that.
Thank you. CSEA.
Due to the lateness of the hour, I don't have a report. However, I will be reporting at the next board meeting about CSEA's effort to recruit young, new leaders to get involved, especially when it comes down to crafting sponsorship and language to support legislation that very much champions education.
Thank you. I see that Saddleback College Classified Senate is not here this evening. So it was a celebratory night, a great night for the district. 50 years is a milestone we all should be really proud of, so have a good evening. Thank you very much.